The big city council meeting of November seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Go Paul, please.
Mayor Mulehofer.
I'm here.
Counselor Cambros is absent. Counselor Vermillion?
Here.
Counselor Suetos?
Here.
Counselor Chester?
Here.
Counselor Shunk?
Here.
And Counselor Dixon?
President.
We have a court.
Right. That's right, Fleety. Pledge your allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic, a free democracy, one nation, under a constitutional, 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 constitutional.
Thank you. James? All right. Next good start of tonight. The first item is public comments. The first question I had is, we're speaking on a paper. And Chris Billman?
No.
Welcome again. You have three minutes. Do you speak to us?
All right. Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. Mr. Mayor, Manager Swanson, Council members. Thank you for having me here today. Thank you for your service to Phoenix and to Southern Oregon. I'm here to go on record in a with a public comment to share with you a possible vision for the city of Phoenix and really all of Southern Oregon. As you may know, Pollinator Project Rogue Valley and other community members have been in discussion with the Urban Renewal Agency Advisory Committee. I would like to share with you some of my thoughts with you before our second meeting with them this Thursday about our proposed ecoeducational center and butterfly house at the corner of Bear Creek Drive and Fourth Street. Pollinator Project Rogue Valley, I'm the volunteer executive director and president of the board, has been in Phoenix since 2017. Our three staff engage with people throughout Southern Oregon, youth and adults in schools, at community events, field trips, and at our plant sales. We partner with a wide range of community organizations, businesses, and foundations, and are supported by a cadre of dedicated volunteers. We are proud to be part of the fabric of the community here in Phoenix. Right now, Phoenix has an amazing opportunity to make an investment in the future of this town, its children, and really the natural world that surrounds a special place. Thousands of community members support our vision to create more educational opportunities for area schoolchildren and other students, opportunities for community members to become involved, young people to be employed, and natural areas for pollinators and people alike. This project will bring in funding from foundations and invite tourists from out of town and provide opportunities for partnership with other surrounding areas in the region. I can show you here 100 letters of support, including from Senator Jeff Golden and executive directors of ScienceWorts, Talent Maker City, Southern Oregon Land Conservancy, KS Wild, and many more, plus letters of support from the community and several funders who have said that they are interested in this project but cannot do a thing unless we own the property. I believe that Phoenix is ready to make this investment for the people throughout Southern Oregon, and people will remember your decision for generations to come. Thank you for this opportunity to share my thoughts with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have another public comment by Madonna further, please come on.
Hi, I'm with the Parks and Parks Committee.
You have three minutes, Lev.
Arts Council, and I was just thinking about how with the fireworks that are being shut down and everything, I love that. That's amazing because it's really good for the environment to not have this and for the animals, but I wanted to propose an idea that the city comes together and does a little bit something different. You know, Ashland has the parade, Medford has the fireworks, and so I propose an idea that we could start work on the red and white blue waterworks day, bringing lots of water down to Blue Heron Park, have like those big giant blow up, you know, water slides and things like that, provide something else for the city. And if you take something away, it's always nice to put something back. So
Yes.
I'm going to work with maybe the Parks and Recs and other people, and I just wanted to put that idea out. And, you know, what else could we do since that's been a lost thing? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Details, what we'll be talking about a little bit later. So I appreciate that. Okay, I don't need anyone else for public comment tonight. Move along. There's no presentation. We'll go on with consent agenda. So many want to take a look at.
I just see that there's one person on Zoom. I'm so sorry. Just want to make sure that they don't want to be recognized for public comment before we move on.
Thank you.
I am not seeing anyone. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much for checking on that. All right. We're going to consent agenda. We've got a chance to do the minutes. We will have a motion to be.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I'll second.
Go Paul.
Counselor Vermillion?
Yes.
Counselor Suetos?
Yes.
Counselor Chester?
Yes.
Counselor Shunk?
Yes.
And Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to the new business. And the first item is H and K, the budget update. Allow the votes. Please come on, please.
Hi. Well, thank you for having me. I'm David McKay with HMK Company, and we were the project manager throughout this project. If I if I could, you could just just give you a real quick kind of overview. You know, spring of 2021 Alameda Fire, twenty, what was it, September eighth, 2020? There was this idea to do a legislative concept and for funding for the new building. I think you're all aware of that. It was successfully passed by the legislature. We went back the following year to receive additional money because of the COVID challenges. No one had ever envisioned that COVID was going to have the inflationary impacts and the long lead kind of supply chain issues that we began to encounter. For instance, your generator was, I think, 28 months from the day we ordered it arrived. So we had many, many challenges. We overcame. You assembled a great team, and I want to give, I want to just take a minute and just really give them the applause for this project. Of course, City Eric, Jackson County Fire District Partners coming together and all of your team were just amazing to be able to work with. We had a clear vision. ORW Architects with Soderstrom Architects teamed together. The value of that was ORW had done your long range facility planning for city government and police. Soderstrom Architects had done the Jackson County Fire District Five long range planning. The two of them coming together were allow us to put a seamless plan together. Of course, Adroit, what a great contractor partner throughout this project. You really had a dream team in my mind to be able to put this project together. I have to say that your building is one of the ones that I'm most proud of in my career. Just just the way we were able to, on a very tight site with small square footage, honestly, I mean, it's 25,000 square feet, but you think about it. We have three entities in that building plus an emergency response center. It really is a great project. I'm really pleased with the quality of the project. I believe that it's going to withstand many, many years, 50, 60, 70 years. We really took a quality approach to addressing that building. Today, we are at the end. Project budget, we're ready to close it out, and I believe you have a budget report in your board packet. Within that, you can see we originally had a budget of 16 million, 538. I'm looking at the revenue page. It should be the very first sheet in your report. And then we aggressively went after additional funding because that wasn't enough, unfortunately, to be able to complete the building. Again, as I'd said, with the 2020 inflation from post COVID, it just started driving the cost up greater than any of us could have ever anticipated. We ended, we've ended with a total revenue, a budget of 18 million, 749, 345. I have a caveat there because your auditors, as I understand it, have asked to accrue costs that the city incurred for this project to the project budget, and I'll talk about that here in just a second. In the end, if you go down to the expense sheet, we did everything we could to try to keep things as tight as possible, and we have ended this report too. If you go back through all the end of month reports, we started doing back in 2021. This is a consistent report and report format from that beginning. We're ending with a total project expense of 18 million, 799, 901. That includes the 300,000 dollars roughly of costs that your auditor has asked to be accrued to the project as they've gone through, if I'm understanding that correctly. What that means is is that you will need financing of 2.269, 206 for the shortfall on the project. I think from the beginning, early, we were estimating roughly about 3 million. So we worked very, very hard to not spend because you had authorization, but to really only spend based on what was absolutely needed to fulfill the program, that which is required for the bill to serve the departments in the building. So we're, even though on the revenue page, I'm sorry, it's, it may be a little confusing. It says that the total revenue is 2 million, 218, 650, 75, excuse me, the financing with the $50,000 of additional project costs that I've talked about, your auditors have asked. Financing is right at that 2.269.
And I just want to clarify what David is referring to. So we've been going through our 2122 audit and making sure that we accrue. So if if an expenditure wasn't originally when we first started this project, we had to create this fund, which was called the Phoenix Fire Recovery Fund. And at that time, in 2122, we transferred the expenditures that were for the project, but there were some expenses that were not transferred. And so as we're going through and auditing, we're finding that there were some expenses accrued that were not on the project budget in that fund, and so we've made those adjustments. So that's what you're seeing there.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. Some of the citizens have asked a question about the 2.2.
Yes.
And could you explain, maybe Eric wants to get involved, how this is, it's a long journey to work and where I just have a statement.
Probably need someone, I mean.
No, I can talk to that. So we developed, we developed a plan to build to. So I mean, we built to what what we needed. And as David has pointed out, we were confronted with a lot of challenges in maintaining that. So in terms of the borrowing, is is way less than what that we had originally projected. So it's a savings of sort. And, you know, basically, it's it's shared between both us and the District Five in terms of the the cost to pay off that. But when you look at it from a big picture, you know, the 2.2 million compared to the overall project cost is a pretty minor or small number for our contribution to, you know, to an 18 million dollar project. So as Dave mentioned, it was quite a, quite a group that we assembled to kind of get us through that that process. And, you know, great support from from our state representatives in terms of some of the legislative funding. It's a fairly large amount and probably one of the larger ones from any of the cities that were able to receive funding for, for after the, they call week, the Labor Day fires, which happened all over, all over the state. Did I answer?
Yeah. How much of it is being financed by Fire District Five? What portion of this?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
And the interest rate. So we have worked with Oregon Business, OBD, to get a loan, and it's at 4%. And we will not start paying on it until we're totally complete, which I think I've mentioned before, we still have a solar portion of this project. We are looking into grants for that, so we're not really sure how much funding is going to be needed. Zach is under the impression we possibly, if we are awarded some grant funding, we could possibly cover the full expense that we're trying to work through that solar piece of it. And once that's complete, we wouldn't start paying on the loan until December of 2026. So not this year, but next year. Originally, we had planned for 2025, but it's it's not happening until next year.
So our portion is basically at 1.2.
And then the terms of that, how long the payment process is that, how much each year?
The loan?
To pay the loan, yeah.
So I believe it's, I want to say it's $220,000 for the Fire District and for ourselves.
Okay.
That is going towards paying the loan.
Okay.
Back.
And then how long do we have until it needs to be paid?
I will have to get back to you on.
Yeah, I think it's a 30 year, but it's also something we can pay back early.
Okay.
So it's, you know.
Well, what I'm going to, we had a high percentage of basically carryover, and that looked really healthy. We're talking general budget. How much do we have in our general budget right now? And would it make more sense to not pay the interest and just pay off the 1.1 and then Fire District Five can finance their part of it?
Well, I, yeah, I'm not.
If we did do that, we wouldn't have our contingency, which is required currently in our policy. So we'd have to look at our balance, and if we do have enough while still maintaining our required contingency percentage, which I believe is 20%.
Okay. We were at 27 or 28?
We were a little bit above, so we we might have some room, but I don't know that we could pay off the full amount. But we can definitely, as Eric said, make some.
Because if we can pay some of it up now and then hunt the interest down the road, then maybe we can do something else with that, our debt load.
Right.
With their decreased debt, do another project or something.
Per my memory, we were going to carry the portion for District Five, and they would pay us. Is that correct?
They are paying, yeah.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Um, the the 225,000 solar, is that, that's what you're talking about that maybe we can get credits to cover that?
Okay.
District. Make sure, make sure you're clear.
Still in the. Okay.
I have that money. It's set aside here for solar and it's still.
It's still in here, but we just have not. That's the piece of it that's still not complete, basically. But.
Call.
So.
Fire District Five has a, like, a sub loan with us, if you will?
They have, so. We have an IGA and lease agreement with them, and so they will be paying a portion of that lease covers their debt, that debt service payment. So at that rate of 50% in addition to their utilities and other expenditures.
Okay. Any other questions?
It's a beautiful building.
It is.
Yeah. I tell you, it's it's really, I mean, it's it's a place that you can have large meetings. I think I've been keeping the council aware of some of the trainings that have been going on there and bringing people from agencies from far away and and just just working in there compared to what was, what the police and City Hall and fire station looked like before. It's an absolute transformation.
Sure. Just in closing, just like to thank you for trusting HMK to manage this project for you. It has been a privilege. Appreciate it.
I thank you for doing such a good job. I know we we had many times you came before council, and I appreciate all your work.
Just wanted to say thank you to David as well.
Yes.
David is a long friend also. So I worked with him at the Ashland School District as well, and he did fantastic job with our projects there as well. So just grateful. Yeah.
Yay.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to either the TLT order to sub tag.
Okay, so TLT, for those that don't know, is the transient lodging tax. In our municipal code, it's under chapter 316, and it's called transient room tax. So it has different names. So just want to make sure I'm covering them all. TLT, transient lodging tax, and transient room tax. Currently, we have a fee, and we've had the same percentage of 6% since inception. And so I've included just, I believe it was a while back, 2024 possibly, or 23, that LOC put together a summary that's in your packet that shows the average percentage. At that time was 7.5% as far as the percentage that's being charged. And this is a tax that's imposed on hotels, motels, RV parks, and short term dwelling units as well. And so currently, within our region, that percentage is closer to about 10%. So we have Ashland at 10%, Talon at 11%, Medford at 11%, Central Point 11%, and Jacksonville at 9%. And currently, Phoenix is at 6%.
Didn't Medford just vote to raise it to 13?
So this is current.
Okay.
So it's not complete yet. So it was, it's as of what's being, I think theirs starts in January. So Okay. Um.
Because somebody's seen a date.
I didn't want to include it, and I just included the current rates because Talon has some things, I mean, some of the cities have some things going on as well.
Yeah.
But this is currently what they're using, though. And we're currently at 6%. So we have not looked at it for a while. In addition to that, we haven't had in Phoenix, at the time, we really had two hotels, motels, RV parks. Since then, we now have quite a few Airbnb, short term rentals. And as I've mentioned before, we are in contact with Airbnb, and we have been collecting revenue, and our first quarter was 3,000 in revenue, which is awesome, that we did not have before. And so just tapping into that market has increased the revenue. But in addition to that, we do want to continue funding our Chamber of Commerce and Art Council and these different activities. And so this year, we've budgeted 18,500. We are having to move a portion of that from the general fund, but I did want to make sure that everyone understood, in this tourist usage fund, the TLT fund that we've set up, it is just 70%. But we do have funds in the general fund as well. And that 70% in our ordinance is just on RV. So we have two. We have Pear Tree and America's Best Value RV Park. So it's those, the two that is going into the TLT fund. In our general fund, we do retain the motel tax revenue. And so when we're transferring over that 10,000, it is covered by the rest of the payers as well. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Is the, do you have Verbo as well as the Airbnb?
They are not paying us. No.
Is it that they don't collect tax or the?
We have not been able to get in contact with them. We've emailed them, and so sometimes, I mean, with Airbnb, it was.
Listings in town.
Huh?
They do have listings in town.
They do.
Yeah, I messed them up.
They do. No, I I'm very aware. Yeah.
Just thought I'd let you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. They haven't answered. Is there a way we can use our city attorney to go after?
We could. I mean, so most, I think a lot of.
We have another idea about that, but we'll go ahead later.
Oh.
You've got another possibility.
Yeah, I think, so they've just been unresponsive. And Airbnb was kind of similar where it's hard to find the person that makes that decision. And so you go through customer service, and with VRBO, it's been even tougher. So we just really need to, I guess, wrap our heads around that one.
One option that might, that I believe would help us is that if we have an IGA with the state, the state.
Right.
Already collects some of this similar type of of hotel motel, which includes tax. And so they have access to all the right numbers and just for a very minimal amount, we think we could have a IGA with the state to help collect this because this is one of the, like, the only tax that we collect internally and have to do the collection thing route where, whereas if we had the state helping us, we think we could, we could benefit from a higher level of of collection.
Sure. More effective and less staff time.
Right. Exactly. Yeah.
You could go to all the property owners that are having Verbos and say, you know, stop. We can do that.
We could do that as well.
Okay.
But we're, I think we're, so we are with the state. We did reach out to their Department of Revenue, and so we are looking to revise our ordinance so that we could work with the state. They are requiring that we revise our ordinance and our language and our ordinance. But in addition to that, tonight, we wanted to look at the percentage of tax that's imposed currently because if we come to you with an ordinance change, we'd like to include the increase in the percentage of tax charged from 6% to 9% in addition to updating the language as well. So I believe the last time the ordinance was updated was in 2013. And so there's been some updates from the state that we have to include as well. And so we'll be bringing that back just so we can start working with the state to help us with collection as well.
Be included in the the language for the new, was it resolution?
Yeah, I believe it'd be a resolution, right? It would change.
And it's an, it'll be an ordinance.
Okay, so it'll be an ordinance. So so there'll be two reads. Yeah.
Well, I don't throw out all the counselors. I like 11% looking at all the numbers. I think we're behind.
I was going to say, I have a question regarding the percentages because if our surrounding area, we have Ashland is 10, Talon is 11, Medford just went to 13, Central Point's 11, it wouldn't hurt us to be at 10. We'd still be below Talon and Medford and Central Point. It would put us in a competitive place without undercutting ourselves.
I don't think anybody looks at it. I really don't. I think they just.
Think they just pay it.
They just.
It is, it is.
People will compare to Talon versus Phoenix based on.
Well, maybe the people who build hotels. I don't know.
No, these are Airbnb. I don't think they'll just look at what's going on in the.
Bedford Hotels, building hotels, if it's comparable, then they have no point. Can you help me understand some of the math here? Looks like 18.5 is what our expenditures are for Chamber of Commerce, Historical Museum, and Community Events. We're projecting 8,500, and an increase from 6 to 9% would be a 50% increase.
Correct.
That 50% increase of 8,500 is 4,250, which would put us at 12, 750, which is short of the 18.5 we need to be in.
It's, it is short, but the hope is that, so 8,500 is a conservative number. And in 1718, when we were collecting as we should be, so another piece of this puzzle is that our payers are not paying. And so, or they're behind in payments. So we're trying to collect that tax. If we were receiving the revenue that we should be receiving, which would be closer to about $11,000 is what it should be. 8,500 is conservative because our collection rate hasn't been great. And so we're hoping, once we transfer to the state, that that would be the case. In addition, the 8,500 did not include our beginning fund balance, which we do have a balance. And so as we're going through the years, I think I've mentioned before, and reconciling and auditing, that number, currently, we have a beginning fund balance of 10,600 in addition to the 8,500 that I'm projecting in revenue. So.
That makes, that math makes a little bit more sense.
So a lot of the the back page with it, with the, that's just old news, or because it doesn't mention.
That's the last time the LOC put together like a summary of every city in Oregon, but just to give you some information to look at to see that even at that time, we were still below the average.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And what year is that?
Um, let's see. Yep. 2020.
2020, okay.
And having read it, many, many Airbnb leads all over the world, I never checked the percentage, you know, when I'm paying the taxes.
I'll let you check the cleaning fee.
Yeah. You never check the taxes and I just recommend the council, we, we step up, you know, and are the same as our surrounding communities. It's like map just weeds, you know, we were too high there. Here we're too low, my estimation. So maybe not all in those terms. No one's gonna really care.
I think it should go to at least ten or eleven. To be in line with what's around us.
Said my piece, but
But Alana, um, and this does, this is only Airbnb VRBOs, it's not hotel.
No, this, this would be all transient lodging. Yes.
So would that, would that negate somebody wanting to come build a hotel?
No, because they look that we're competitive with everyone around us. That's my point.
I don't know, it's way more expensive.
Yeah, I think eleven is aligned with
There's no reason not to be.
There's no reason not to be. So it would be, let's say the RV park behind America's Best Hotel. I don't know how much those spot spaces are a month, but
Oh yeah, monthly for that. Think about that.
I don't want to slow the city down, cause I just want to consider.
Yeah, yeah. Did they pay seven hundred, eight hundred a month? So ten percent would be another
And I think, I think
Eighty dollars a month.
It, it, the definition is if it's thirty days or more, there's some period of time they're not subject to.
Oh, so it's short, it's a short-term one. That's more of a long-term.
So they're living their long-term.
That's correct. Thank you for
That was a good question though.
I'm just trying to think of this.
Sure. Yeah, that was good. That was a good question.
Okay.
I'm on board. At some point, if we've had enough to schedule, it's up to you.
What number do we feel comfortable with?
Go ahead and make your motion and then maybe, yeah, you have your number and then just vote it out.
I think you should make the math bad.
One, two, seven, four, eight.
Sorry. Where are we doing? I'm looking for wording.
Believe we have it.
Bottom of page thirteen.
Yeah, nine to your number.
Bottom of page thirteen.
Uh, page thirteen.
Well, that's the magic eight ball.
Is there a, is there an amount that we're restricted to raise it above? Like if it's at six percent?
There is not.
Okay. I motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to amend our transient room tax to increase our tax rate from six percent.
To?
To. I'll just say eleven percent and to update the municipal code for recommendations from the Department of Revenue.
Go ahead, second.
I'll say it.
Okay, well gone.
Counselor Chester?
Yes.
Counselor Shunk?
Yes.
Counselor Suetos?
Yes.
Counselor Vermillion?
Yes.
And Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, I think it's time for, you know, competitive with our neighbors. And that's one of the things we're doing here. So we appreciate it.
I do like to work from the art. The art council.
Yeah, that's the next one. Well, that's maybe, I think it's going to give you either part of me. Okay. Anyway, we have Will Volfer coming up to talk about the art committee update. Will, would you please come up? Thank you, counselors for the T L T. I think that's important.
Yeah, congratulations on the T L T increase. That's a big deal.
Yeah.
And thank you for that. Will Volfer, Phoenix, Oregon, Chamber of Commerce. Uh, thank you, Mayor and council members for having me today. I'd like to offer an update on recent transitions involving the art group uh, under the Chamber of Commerce. And earlier this year, an informal art group supported by the Chamber of Commerce helped launch several community-facing projects, including the very first Second Friday event in August. From the beginning, leadership in that group expressed interest in operating under a five oh one C three. Um, our Chamber of Commerce is a five oh one C six. And in October, the group under the chamber dissolved and they established their own nonprofit and LLC and registered their name as the Phoenix Art and Culture Council, which is no longer affiliated with the chamber. At the time, the chamber, excuse me, at the same time, the chamber continues to lead projects that benefit from having a dedicated internal team. And for this reason, a new chamber-appointed art committee has been formed to support chamber-related initiatives and to advance our mission, which is to support small business success and community building in and around Phoenix, Oregon. Earlier this year, the city council approved funding of ten thousand dollars to support arts and culture in Phoenix. That funding was provided to the Chamber of Commerce to administer. Today, there remains seven thousand seventy dollars to be allocated between now and the end of June. And our intention is to administer the funds in a way that aligns with the original budget proposed. In full transparency, the past few months have been challenging. There's been multiple groups and individuals who have worked to define their roles. And moving forward, the chamber's committee will operate as a formal subcommittee of our organization, which means that it will be provided structure under our organizational bylaws and clear expectations of committee members. Ultimately, what matters to me and what matters to our organization is that community-focused work is accomplished in a positive and productive way. And our hope is to contribute constructively to a broader ecosystem of creativity, culture and economic fatality in Phoenix. I wanted to provide an update for you. I know that, uh, I was here earlier this year and, uh, requested, uh, funding on behalf of the chamber. The other art group also requested funding. So I wanted to communicate about what was going on and how we're moving forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you have.
Okay, could you announce the people that are on your committee? There's some new names that
We went through a nomination process over the last couple of weeks and conducted interviews. And our board of directors has selected five individuals to be on our committee. Those individuals will hold their first meeting on Monday of next week, the twenty-fourth, at which point they will be confirmed. And so right now they're unconfirmed, but I'm happy to share those names with you. Uh, Mateo Young will be our chair. Amanda Kosket will be our vice chair. Masa Mori will be our secretary. Levanya Kruger is an at-large and Melissa Fairhurst is also at-large.
So, any of the council have any questions?
So the P A C C became a separate group altogether?
Yes.
When the council through this, this tax is funding that ten thousand for art, that's no longer flowing to them. That's still administered by the chamber, but it's going towards their own in-house art council, so to speak. So I understood that.
The, right now, the money is, uh, in the chamber account and we intend to administer it in a, in court, in, in alignment with the budget that was proposed. And so that could potentially be in-house, but there's also some really talented people outside of our organization and outside of this committee who could potentially come to us and ask for funds. So, um, we're open to, um, administering the money in a way that, uh, benefits the greatest good. And so if that's through us, that's great. If it's through another organization, we're open to that.
Yeah.
Any other question? Okay, very good. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do, Will.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, I think I see somebody new in the background. Is that Josh maybe? I don't know. Josh Ruby here. I guess not. Okay. We have a partisan right side. Okay. You reached out to him. And yeah.
I do, I do see online, we have an RJ, but I don't know. Could you raise your, what is?
Did I transpose JR?
I know, like reverse Josh Ruby. Um, I'm not seeing them make themselves known. I did let him know and he did confirm that this time worked for him. So I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay, and I know this group
Is he not the RJ here?
Are you sure it's a male? It's not Ruby.
Oh, you want to check if he's outside. You were good. Just checking he's out the panel.
Or Ruby? Is that Ruby online? I could have it.
Likes to have the right?
Yeah, okay. So we will, we will table this and reach out to Josh Ruby, uh, in the future. Okay?
It's RJ.
Sounds a lot of top. Is it? Oh, oh, okay.
That is him?
No, I'm, I'm not sure.
Is it a him or is it Ruby? Is it a him or is it Ruby?
It's a, you know, here.
I know, is it Ruby Josh? Last name? Yeah, yeah. I mean, it could be the other way. RJ. Oh. It'd be, yeah, RJ.
Stands on here.
Yeah.
Give him a chance.
Or her.
Or Ruby.
Or her.
Hello, RJ. I have you available to talk if you're able to come off mute. It could be.
Yeah.
We're done. Okay. We'll table that for, uh, next time. No problem. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to all business. The second reading of ordinance ten fifty-three, Normans and Non-Normans, nine oh nine title and section eight point one six point zero seven five, section eight point one six point zero seven zero fireworks within the city limits of the Phoenix Municipal, like the Phoenix Municipal Code, age nineteen to twenty-one. And Nicole, I know you were not here last time to hear everything. I encourage you to read the minutes, which I assume you have. So you've had the history of what went on. The rest of us have had a, uh, a very lively discussion on this. I don't know, Nicole, whether you want to add anything before we go on to a motion.
I have a question.
And you have a question too.
Yeah, I know. I know. I just want specifics to be defined, defined. Um, so here it says, um, establishments of limits of districts in which storage of fireworks, explosives and blasting agents is to be prohibited. And I want to ask the question about, um, and I don't know if it's different in the city limits or rural, but like I know we have a lot of like recreational hunters in the area. Is like stored ammunition, if it's kept in a safe place, is that considered explosives and blasting agents under there? Or, um, or fertilizers or
The prices here maybe
I know, I'm like, who am I? I don't know who to ask.
You're talking like ammonium nitrate or something like?
Well, that's, I'm just saying is this, like, it just says, um, the manufacturing, sale, possession and transfer of fireworks or explosives. It's the or explosives that I would like to have to find because does that mean people who have firearms or ammunitions in their home, even if they're safely stored, is that saying that that's now not allowed?
Me like hunters. Hunter, hunters.
Yeah, like say they're hunters or, or whatever. And people have firearms sometimes, so. Um, we're in the fire, so fireworks. So it says establishments of limits of districts in which storage of fireworks, explosives and blasting agents is to be prohibited. So I'm curious, what's defining explosives and blasting agents? And then the same thing under at the bottom.
Lieutenant Price, do you want to come and read off my page really quick? Just so that way you can see it.
Yeah, I'm just curious if it's including those sorts of things or not.
Could I just make a point? So this, this was a
This is fail on me.
Well, it, it, it was already in the ordinance.
Yeah, I, and I think it says just explosives.
This mayor, this mayor, it's already in the ordinance. That was not
This is our current ordinance. Yeah.
Yeah, it was, yeah. If you look at page twenty, you'll see the clean copy. You look at, uh, page twenty-one, you see the mark of
I want to make sure we're not adding something new.
No, no, it's, it's already.
Well, I'm just, I just want to make sure we don't upset a whole new group of people.
Yeah, I think it's already been in the ordinance. So, and it, and the sub at the bottom says fireworks or explosives. So
The challenges are
Yeah.
More information in here, uh, because I, I know there's people that love their own ammunition.
Yeah, my father used to do that. Yeah, that's why I'm aware of that.
And it's never been illegal to the lab.
Right.
Ammunition's the house, you know, it's
Is this making it illegal now?
Well, I have to be, I, I just, I'm not sure.
Let me, let me just clarify. So it was already in the ordinance. And so we're not changing it.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, all you're doing is no firearms.
We're, 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 yeah.
Okay, but explosive, I mean, yeah.
I have no problem saying that. I'm just
Are you okay with that?
That was a good question. Check in.
Yeah, same question.
Yeah.
Okay, cause a lot of people do reload their ammunition, especially
That's, I mean, I wouldn't want to suddenly be like, now you can't do that thing if you've been allowed to do it all along.
If anything. No.
Okay. It doesn't offend that then?
I mean, if, if a code section or ordinance brings reasonable minds to question what it means, then it could be considered vague. And so we don't want to pass an ordinance that would be void for vagueness because reasonable persons don't know what they can and cannot do. That's like kind of the test for vagueness. So if this raises a question in all y'all's mind, what are we actually prohibiting? Then that might be a reason to add language to it. Um, but if there's a good, if you think a reasonable person could read this and know, you know, that this is banning fireworks and not ammunition reloading, then it's probably okay, but it's a reasonable question to ask.
Yeah. So if that is, it has to come back for another reading. If we change the language, will it?
Yeah, if we change the language, we would need to do a new reading of it.
I guess, you know, it's, this language has been in there for a long time and nobody's tried to go in somebody's home and say, you can't have ammunition, reload, reload ammunition.
Explosives are pretty clear, I think. You know, and there's an F under my kitchen sink where I could blow half my house apart.
So I mean, like fertilizers and
It's a tough thought, but it is. So there's a, I, I think explosives are like dynamite, T U T, that kind of stuff.
Okay, yeah, fair enough.
I would think so. I don't think it's weird clarifying it to go through a third meeting.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to bring it up in case anybody else thought it was an issue.
Yeah.
This is my thoughts.
Okay.
Okay, are you fine with it?
Yeah, I'm okay with it as long as
Good question then.
Okay, somebody want to make a This one's dirty. I'll go for it. I move approval on second reading of ordinance ten fifty-two and ordinance amending title eight, section eight point one six point zero seven five and section eight point one six point zero seven zero fireworks within the city limits of the Phoenix Municipal Code.
A second discussion.
Discussion.
I just want to, I just want to put my two cents worth in again that I, that I think it punishes the, the mom and pops and, and grandparents in the street while the people who are doing the dangerous illegal explosives are still going to keep doing that. But so that reason, I'm not for it.
Can we have a fun water, red, white?
Yes, I love that idea. Red, white and blue.
Think about the fire mitigation. We'll be all glad.
That's right. With one stone. I love that idea.
Yes, I think
That really pushes us.
I think finding alternative ways to celebrate, if we, we just have to leave the charge. That's all.
Yeah.
At least we got a great person recommend it. I think to work on that stuff too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, she's doing it.
Any other comments before we? Okay, we have a motion.
Oh, we have a motion.
In the second, so any other comments, uh, then we'll call.
Counselor Shunk?
Yes.
Counselor Chester?
Yes.
Counselor Suetos?
Yes.
Counselor Vermillion?
No.
And Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Before I move on, Angie, thank you for your thoughts and for sharing. And for the last meeting, having a very healthy, respectful kind of debate, I really left feeling good.
Yeah, I did too. It was great. Yeah.
Thank you.
For you, for you, Mike. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to continue on. It's a public hearing. We're on a staff report. City Attorney.
Waterside Bouncy Houses. Waterside bouncy houses make me very nervous, but.
Oh, it's a good point, we didn't.
My one comment, but, um. That's very.
National courses one direction are covered by most insurances, but not bouncy houses.
Yes, so, okay, okay. It's a good valid point.
Lawyer's mighty sense are up?
A little bit, a little bit, makes me a little bit nervous, um, but you know, I'm, I'm sure everyone will go through the proper channels of liability and insurance and making sure we're okay, but just, um. It makes, it makes me a little nervous.
Mr. Swanson?
Okay, well, um, speaking of. Things to maybe look forward to next year, what definitely look forward to next year and maybe doing something around it is that it's our country's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And I, uh, I had a solicitation today, you'll probably see in your email box. From a company that's helping, uh, cities put together kind of a historic. So, you know, something you would put in a capsule perhaps, uh, and, you know, I've been involved in a few times before where they'll open. In fifty years later, a hundred years later, time capsule kind of thing. And I thought, you know, for two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, that might be.
Yeah.
Maybe a good Fourth of July.
Yeah.
That'd be pretty cool.
Yeah.
I think there's a time capsule for this building.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Yeah, so anyway, just something to think about, if, if you have any interest, I know it's really short notice.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, there is, there was a email that I forwarded to you, and it's, if you can participate in a, like a webinar or something. To hear what, hear what they offer, which I think really fits his talents, and it's a lot about history, historic. And, and then also looking into the, the future, the one, the one I remember doing. Was, was asking students. Because this is something that people can participate at all ages, is asking students, what do you think the biggest issue will be in? Dayton, uh, in fifty years, and so they all had to write.
Yeah.
Their ideas about. You know, what they see happening fifty years from now, and then they open it up and see what.
Very. Yeah, the high school could contribute, that'd be pretty neat.
Yeah, yeah.
Two thousand and seventy-five, that, that's a big number, that would be the year. Fifty years from now. Yeah, sounds weird, doesn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, what is this number, we don't know?
And then there was another one for if I were mayor, which is. Hello.
Right, I saw that.
Yeah.
You, you were flooding me with emails.
Yeah, well, it just seemed to happen.
Ideas are coming out of, no, they're all great ideas, really, yeah.
That one is specifically for students.
Right, no, that, I'd love to do that.
They got pretty much outlined, so we'll, we'll do some more.
Yeah.
Some more work on it together. Um, so last week I just wanted to also let you know that we, uh, were able to have a, a really, a, a, a good showing for a meeting with so ready and some of our local and regional partners talking economic development. So I forwarded everybody the agenda from that meeting and, uh, obviously there's a whole list of things that we were working through. And trying to communicate with the new, they have a new director, Blair Sindel, if you recall, he was, came here, uh, a few meetings ago and introduced himself. Really appreciate his, the energy he put around this and getting the right people, private and public. Sector, talking about DH five, and just all the opportunities that we have, so, um. Anyway, just check out your emails and if you have any questions, let me know. And I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to email from time to time, updates, things that are going on, so I appreciate. Some of the feedback. We had a really nice event and I've already emailed this with the Ballin Police Officers Association. It's training that supervisors should get in terms of if you ever have a situation where a police officer is killed in the line of duty. Or dies while in, on duty, well, active duty, they call it. And, uh, it, it happens and it's great to know that there's a resource out there that helps. Communities, police departments know how to deal with that, and we heard some really. A couple of stories from the presenters that were kind of horror stories, for lack, lack of a better term, of how things were, were, were handled. You know, in a, in a not a very good way, so this. This association has really spent a lot of time. Putting together protocols, what do you do, who do you contact, because obviously these things don't happen all the time, so it was really. I think it was well worth the, just the training and I hadn't planned to be there actually, just heard it was happening, so joined. Probably, what do you think, uh, LT, probably at least? Fifty plus, uh. Agencies, maybe you can talk a little bit more, I know you're a big supporter of that, of the selection.
Uh, that was my second time through that particular class, uh. But that's the area that, uh, is, we saw, obviously, like the thing though. Uh, but they, they, there, there's a packet. That, uh. Basically, the officer fills out and, uh, provides. These agencies that are, are these, uh, groups that come in and help with the, with the even officer. And, uh, they basically take over and they, they plan everything, they pay for everything. And, uh. But this, this packet, the officer fills out. It's almost like a will of testament type. Uh. But the struggle I found is when I first started the course about seven years ago, I gave that packet out to every single officer. Uh, I think I gave about, about eight of them at the time, they got too bad. Uh, because they just don't, but, um, but, but they don't realize is the. You know, in this profession, we can be done in an instant. And what you, these are family with, or these are department with, you sit with. It's a massive. Just a, an overwhelming. Emptiness for, you know, what, what we do. And this group that's running the class is, uh, unfortunately highly traded in. Because of incidents, and, uh. And, uh, they also talked about, um. The, uh, the notifications and whatnot, and that always sticks out to me, I've given, in my career, I've given more. Uh, that notification that I want to, I want to do again. And, uh, but if, if you approach that call. You can really. That's the situation though, and that was one of the things they talked about, uh, they called it was scenarios again. So. Um. I plan on giving those texts out again, give a little bit of emphasis on returning them in. And, uh.
Would it be something you could do during the employment paperwork?
It's absolutely good.
As part of just the entry and onboarding process, because that seems hugely important.
It's, it's extremely, uh, uh, I'm guilty of having one. So, uh, it's something that, like, thank you.
Sure, getting my wife to fill out the will for our kids was, I had to trick her to get to the attorney. She was angry for about two years, but she's finally forgiven.
But if you'll notice on each of the weekly reports you get from, from the chief. At the bottom, they always have a statement of, of, of dated number of. Officers killed, officers and canines killed in the line of duty.
Yeah.
So if you'll notice, that number. Yeah, anyway, so that's it.
Okay, good, really appreciate everything you're doing, yeah, your foot, but. Great, great emails, I mean, it's, it's all fantastic, yeah. Okay, let's start at this end, Mike. Okay, we got a couple of things, um. First thing, we had talked last time with the gentleman at the end during, uh, looking at a four-way stop sign at Elman Rose. Are there any updates on that, or is that too, too early to kind of update?
Yeah, no, I think we're, we're just kind of going out there and looking, looking it over and, you know, there was a couple of conversations we've had, so we're probably going to probably come back at some time here soon, probably the next meeting, um. With asking the council if they want to proceed ahead with some sort of a traffic study to look at. What, what, uh, what they would, a traffic engineer would recommend in that situation, there's some expenses involved in that, so before we, before, I thought it was worth. Spending money, I'd want to get the council.
For sure.
Engaged, yeah.
It's a pretty high, high risk coming down that hill, so be good, look at it. And the second thing, uh, Nicole and I met with Bob, that Bob, the amazing firewise. Volunteer community liaison, um, and we had a great discussion. And one thing that became. Kind of. Clear, or I'd like us to maybe take a look at as a council is our evacuation map. To me, um. Our current evacuation map. Looks kind of busy and doesn't tell me what to do. Uh, and so I'm wondering if we can take a look at that, we've got three mobile home park communities. Uh, age restricted mobile home park communities, and. We've got stuff on the website, we've got digital stuff, but I feel we need something paper, as Bob said, something they can put on the refrigerator. So when it is time to go, they've got something in hand that can direct them, um, and help us to save themselves. So. I don't, yeah, we all got copies of this after the fire. Um, I don't know if everyone is still getting them, but they have to go online to get it, right? The evacuation.
Correct, yeah.
On the city website or?
Yep, they're on the city website, and Jackson County Emergency Services actually creates that map and distributes it for Talent, Ashland, Medford, Central Point, Phoenix.
So Talent, Ashland, and us are all wildly different. So it's interesting that they were, here's Ashland, here is ours, and here's Talent. So if the same organization is making these three, they're all wildly different. Talent is the easiest to follow, but I understand maybe Chief doesn't want to have arrows, because we don't want people following arrow into a fire, but it's a lot clearer. Okay, if I was someone, I want to know what to do. So the map needs to be clear, is what you're saying, yeah, hold on.
I think the roads need to be clear, marked clearly, like that one does not have the road, like where are the roads on that one, it's harder to see, right, the one, the other one you showed had red lines.
Well, where do you go?
Well, it depends on where the fire is too, like, which.
It doesn't, it's here, you want to go there.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, there was this big discussion and I, I, I support the chief on this. And, uh. You know, every, this map is for. A crisis, it could be a fire, it could be something else. How can you have arrows on maps? When there's something else going on, you're telling people to go right into the problem, how can you do that ahead? Now, what I'm wondering is if you have evac area one, two, three, or four, you could tell people maybe go to evac three. Because right now, where do you go, like, I'm in this. It's a fire, we want them to go beyond the evacuation.
Yeah.
See, that's the problem with that, I can create all sorts of scenarios, everyone different, and all different directions of city.
Well, I think it was Medford or Central Point that recently they had that oil leak or gas leak, and they had a fire at the same time, and they told people to evacuate into the oil problem, and so it was a. So. That was something Chief lifted up in our management meeting.
Well, walk, walk me through this, I'm in PH, I'm in PHX tag. I get a notification, what do I do? Just evacuate? How am I going to be notified?
So, so we can maybe take it offline too, if you want to get a little better explanation with the chief there, but, because he's the one to help make that map, but. Um, to your point, like, how do you know, so there's, if, if you've, if you've got, actually, if you have the phone that tells you, you know. Which areas to evac, it's a ready, set, go, so you, you don't go from. From, uh, getting notified to evac right away.
Sure.
Ideas, you, you get ahead of it, and then they're able to like. Uh, direct traffic at that point, so it's, it's more of a, it's more of a, you, you use it with, with the phone, with, you know, people that sign in, it has, they have to. They have to sign in, opt in to the system.
And that works.
It's not just going to happen.
That these three age restricted mobile home parks, that assuming everyone has a smartphone.
Yeah.
And assuming the cell towers aren't down.
Right.
And we can't get five G or four G service, that's the other kicker.
Yeah, no, there's, it's none of, none of, ever airtight, but I think what, what he's suggesting. Is, is based on, you know, a lot of.
But maybe I need more explanation.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, I think that.
Now, it sounds like maybe an offline thing, because.
Yeah.
To me, if I, someone gave me that, said, here you go, I'd be like. You know, I've got a doctoral degree, I was like, I don't, I can't process this. Yeah, it depends where, where the emergency is, where the problem is, you know, but that's, not to belabor the point, but. Even knowing where the emergency is. Where do I go? If PHX stuck near evac. I know, they need, you need a direction, I, I agree. Evac north. Right, this, this is the one, two, three system that we see always, you know, activated in fire season, but you need to be told. You know, where to go, because every situation is different, the other thing is if people are, are not iPhone ready and all. There is a, a system, uh, that the county runs called, uh. Mass Registry or something like that.
Is it watch duty?
Say again?
Is it watch duty?
Well, no, watch duty is on my phone.
Oh, I see, sorry.
The, the county has got something where anybody that has a challenge in, in evacuating doesn't like, it's not like you and I. Uh, they can get on that, and so they'll get additional assistance from emergency responders during, during the situation, and they should all be registered on that, and maybe that's something we can put out on our website. It's on the, the county website. So. Yeah, just to make sure they're connected, so somehow you can get. Yeah, but I agree, we need to know which, which direction to go, because it's, it could be anything beyond a fire, everyone, thing is fire, you know, you go up like. I don't know, whatever, yeah, it's a direction. Yeah, you can never plan for it, you just kind of. Yeah. It's ready to go. That's a good point.
Well, and, and during the Alameda fire, it was a tremendous effort put out by the police department to go knock on doors.
Yeah.
To get people.
And I think you have, ultimately, you have to do that.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Really be, you know.
That's really what happens, and even in the situation we had here several months ago with the fire over by, uh, the helicopter pad. It's still police officers, even with all the technology, police officers were still knocking at doors, updating citizens, so it's. It's not just a thing, there's a lot of other things going on.
I didn't have a casual, you know, back in that time, we lived here for quite a while, we didn't get any notifications, but my son out the window, it told me to get it home.
Yeah.
So I know the notifications have improved quite a bit.
Yeah.
Action counter, and that's. Yeah, everyone should be on that system. And, you know, which area, like I think I'm PH twelve, so. You should know that or consult with them, but if the map needs to be improved, Mike, I mean, that's, that's. But this with directions, and then it's almost like there's too many small streets, what are the kind of main streets to take to get out? Okay. Maybe, just who can I give the map?
That was chief, um, working with Jackson County, that's, that's.
Just.
Rosa.
Maybe I'll talk to the chief about it, and we maybe find two, or maybe I just need to understand the. The concept, I did. Thinking else, huh? No.
Just on that, I'll add that I did create, um, or I did distribute that same zoning map to, I think, three or four different of those mobile home park communities, so I met with four different individuals that. All came and picked up what zone am I in, gave them their zone, so they can put it up in their community centers, um, because that came out of a council conversation and follow-up, so.
Well, another thing is, could we, if you have this one pager on the backside. Cap, here's how you register with this, here's the phone numbers to call. Here's how you're going to be notified.
That's a great idea, yeah.
While we're paying for this. Here's what a go bag looks like. That kind of stuff.
Yeah, no, I think that's the biggest, one of the biggest limitations is people have to opt in, it doesn't just automatically, yeah, so, um. In most cases. Yeah.
Well, send your ideas to the chief, uh, you know, okay, that's great, thank you.
Um, yes, thank you for bringing up the stop sign on Elman Rose, because I was going to bring that up again too, I'm glad that's in process. Um, I was also curious where we're at with the civility pledge, that like being worked on or?
So that's scheduled for our, I believe, our next ci- city council meeting, okay, um, and I'm going to be creating a resolution for that and be able to have you guys talk about it.
Okay, cool, I just want to make sure it didn't drop off the table.
Did not fall off.
And then, uh, let's see, last week I went to the empty bowls event and served soup to all the people, and oh my gosh, we had so many people. It was a fabulous event and, um, overwhelming support from the community, so I was really happy about that. And Cheryl got her sign back after it went missing.
Good.
Yep, yep, I don't know if you heard about that one, um, and then we went to the art walk and it was another. Good time out on the street, seeing all the people and, uh, the vendors, everybody was out lively. And then I went over to the foodery and I met the new manager, Matt. Yeah, I really.
And there he is.
Forgot the last name, it's all like, I think it's in the back of the room there, um, and I'm, uh, encouraged by the new manager and ideas and. Um, hopefully the foodery can restore itself to its previous glory for our community.
Matt, you want, you wanted to say a couple of words, if you don't mind, I think it'd be worth.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, yeah, I was very, very, but, uh. Yeah, I'm very excited to, I, I'm honored to have this tradition, as I remember, I've lived in the U.S. since twenty seventeen. Um, so, I mean, I. My teacher, the, yeah, I'm involved, you know, you have Coach, I'm there, I'm on board with everything that's on my mind. Yeah, I, I love it, I'm so excited for it. That's why I'm here too, to just stand again to. Ask everything, you know, see where everybody stands at, and see, I know what the foodery is, what it wants to be, and I would love for any of these to get anything, how can we help, you know, it's. Wants to be, you know, one of the biggest things and. Yeah, how can we help, how can we all work together, that's the, that's the goal.
I think our civic center is one of the bigger opportunities to try to combine events of the civic center with, with foodery.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, yeah, it's, uh. It's, it's a good, good opportunity.
Thanks for taking on that challenge. It's a great community resource.
Yeah.
Excited.
Okay, Larry.
Well, if you've been on the east side near Grove in Fern Valley, there's a lot of activity going on there. The city's putting in a new street, all the infrastructure, the, the water mains and the storm sewers and have the roads turned, turned, turned upside down. And but it's preparing for the 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 affordable housing unit that's going to go in on the east side of Grove. So a lot of stuff going on there and the city is very involved in making sure it's done right.
One, I was going to mention, just to add on what Larry mentioned, so that that's what he's talking about is the Phoenix Corner that's going to be built there and it's going to provide eighty-eight more affordable housing units. And as he mentioned, it's a new road. I think it's been, it's the new, the first road we built in Phoenix since the road you live up on was built back in the nineties. Yeah. So, and then we're also building another one, you know, part of the, the Senate Bill project, the economic development project, which will build another road. So we'll have two roads. New roads, something we haven't done in a long time, but it's progress.
I don't have any.
Donnie?
No.
I just wanted to speak to what, to Lieutenant Price and, and what he was talking about and, and, and coming off the Alameda fires too, or where they're at, that the officers are going in and risking themselves. I know, I think Eric, you told me about Chief Donie, his last day in talent was the day of the fires and he stayed and, and helped. And like, it is miraculous that, that more people didn't die. Like, we're so blessed in that. And with the police officers, like every time I drive past one, I try to say prayer for them. A couple of years ago, I was pulled over leaving city council because I had forgot to turn my headlights on, but I was pulled over by oh, Officer Hall, maybe, I think. He didn't know who I was, but we, we had been talking about hard police stuff in that meeting that day. And so he asked me about it. And I told him that I worry about him because, you know, there was a lot of rhetoric against police then. And he said, thank you. My daughter is so worried. She had to say a prayer for me before I leave. And so I thought, you know, I thank you for what you do and what your men do, Lieutenant Price.
What's the, I don't know if you, I'm sure you remember Scott Clausen. He's on the council here.
Yes.
He was actually shot in line of duty.
I did not know that.
So, yeah.
He was chief Metford Police, wasn't he?
Metford, yeah. I was there. He's assistant, yeah.
I didn't know that.
Great gentleman, as you know.
He's a good guy.
Yeah.
You've covered everything on the empty bowls and fireworks.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, they're made of soup.
No, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, that's right. Your servers are totally. It was a great event. Say hello again next year, I'm sure.
They pull on the rock star.
Yeah, she was.
I seen you with dishes.
Yeah.
I saw her over there. Oh my gosh, you were sweating.
Sweating and soup. She's cleaning up.
I was, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a great event. Yeah, everyone's covered everything. Thanks again. Our, our police department is, is absolutely the finest. I hear that from everyone. I see them all. I've been around to be with you and I've got the feedback. It's always outstanding. Just not good, outstanding, lay up there, the tops. I'm really, really proud of everyone. I don't have anything, so I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
And we'll see you in the summer. On that.